... through their vision of truth and justice to better serve you and the people of this county, and that the county can prosper under their leadership. These things, we ask our heavenly Father in your holy name, amen.
... To the flag of the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions, any changes to the agenda? If not, do I hear a motion that it be approved? It's been moved that we approve the agenda as you have it before you. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. There is no opposition. The next item, two, is approval of the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion that the consent agenda be approved? It's been moved that the consent agenda be approved. All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed. The consent agenda is approved. We now come to the public comment section of our program. And Mr. Clark is with us tonight.
Keith Clark, 312 Acorn Drive, Sanford, North Carolina. I want to compliment the both Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education for the meeting I had the opportunity to observe today. It was an example of public servants coming together in an effort to work through a difficult problem and at the same time, keep faith with the people. You hear a lot about the Tea Party movement. And I have my Google Reader set so I can follow what's really happening in that movement. It's been an effort by some people here to claim it as theirs. What these people are really dissatisfied with is not conservatives or liberals, but with people not keeping their word with the voters and the way things are done. And I believe there was a sincere effort in that room, and there will be a sincere effort by these people, these people on both sides, to find a way to meet the needs of Lee County High School. I believe that is one of the best economic development decisions you can make. And as a conservative, I would rather you build a building that you know we're going to have to build at $100, $105 a square foot than $325 a square foot. Let's put this issue behind us. Let's settle it right. Let's sell it with an eye on the real cost to the taxpayer over the long term, not shift it to the future. And let's do it now. And I know that you will work to support not the loudest voice, but make the loudest voice of all, the voters who voted in that election. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Under Old Business, discussion concerning social media initiative "Lee Linked" by Mr. Brinson.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tonight, I want to discuss with you the results of the survey we took on the social media initiative. I have a PowerPoint where we all have the slides, so we'll just go by this. I'll just go by, go question by question and kind of go over the results that we got. So question one asks the survey taker to identify the age range, just to ensure that they were all not minors. And you see that under 18, there were none that reported being under 18 at least. Okay, then question two, how often do you visit a social media site? We've got ranges from multiple times a day down to never. And 75%, over 75% said they visited at least weekly, which is a pretty good statement. People do use these social media sites. Question three asks which social media sites should Lee County use? And it ranges from Facebook all the way down to Dig and Maps and all the above. And of course, the number one vote getter was Facebook. And the four top ones were the ones that were kind of expected to be the most, Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, and the Google Alerts. Those are the four that were kind of anticipated, which worked out pretty well. Question three also had, or gave an opportunity for people to add in additional sites or additional comments. And the main thing here, there were some useful comments on here. And there were a lot of people that said they also want to use standard email, just be on an email distribution list and receive it that way as well. Question four of seven, what type of information should Lee County use to get this information out there? The top three were general announcements, important dates such as library events, tax dates, and then real-time emergency information. And also, question four had an opportunity for the survey takers to give comments. Question five, it says, and this one, this one was a little far-fetched. It says advances in technology present an opportunity to conduct video calls and conferences. How likely would you be to engage in this with Lee County government? And 70%, over 70% said that they would, that there is potential for that. Just the other day, I had to call someone in Poland, and I didn't want to use my cellphone. I didn't want to use a lame phone, so I used my computer, which is free. Called the guy through my computer on conference call. And we talked for, you can talk for any length of time, and it was free, no long distance or anything. So that's, that's a good resource potentially. Question six, I wanted to gauge how effective or how useful this program will be to the citizens. So I sit on a scale of one to five, with one being pretty much status quo and five being almost life-changing. How would this Lee Link initiative rank in your life? And 80% ranked it three or above, which is a pretty good statement. And 34 survey takers out of 135 ranked it as a five. So they, they would be interested in this social media initiative and getting information this way. Then the last question, which departments should use social media? And going back to Mr. Reeves' statement earlier, if there's a department not only social media committed, we want to make sure that if there's a, if there was a demand there, that we have the department represented. So the top three vote getters were that. The top one was Parks and Recreation, and then the Tax Office and Emergency Services. Those are the top three. All departments are pretty well represented, but those were the top three. And question seven also had, or gave an opportunity for them to give comments. And you see there, in the link, three, they give Commissioners, Planning and Inspections, and none, were the three comments I got on that. And then the last question, or the last opportunity, gave the survey takers an opportunity to just add in any additional comments they had any concerns. And you see it ranged all the way from great idea, I hope this is not something that would down the vine, down to we shouldn't do this. But the majority of them were positive, I feel like. So with that, I feel that the survey, it was effective and we got some good useful information. And I'll answer any questions I can at this time.
How did you advertise this survey? Because we had, what, 134 respondents?
Hundred, yeah, about 135. Well, the Herald, for one, they did a real good ad force on this. After the, few days after the last board meeting, they put it out there and said, hey, Lee County is considering using social media to enhance communication with the citizens. They, they want to get input from the citizens. So we had to add in the Herald. The Tax Office has a distribution list of about 400 accounts. So I shot it out to them. We put it on existing social media sites. Word of mouth, we had these little brochures where people came into the government center. We had an elevator. They could take this brochure, see what the program was about, and it had directions on how to take the survey. So we, we made a good attempt to get the word out there. But surveys typically have a low response rate. The demand is there. Cities down from Topsail Island Surf City all the way to the Charlotte Mecklenburg County are using social media. Topsail Island has 11,000 fans on the Facebook page. So there are many, many other local governments in North Carolina using this.
Any other questions? What happens now? How do you proceed? What, what's your plan?
Well, so far, nothing. Mr. Reeves just asked me how much, what was the cost associated with this? And I said, so far, nothing. And really, most of the, most of the stuff that the committee's reviewing, it's just, you know, just trying to utilize our time in a different manner. Most of these things are free. We're trying to figure out how we can communicate better with the public. And I think based, I sat in on one of the discussions the other day, and I think what we're going to try to do is take a couple of departments, try some pilot things in there, and see how they're, how they're received before we, you know, get everybody involved in it. So Dwayne and his group are going to start looking at, probably start in tax and see how tax goes. And then we'll probably move, try to move it to Parks and Rec, since, you know, they were the two highest vote getters, and just see how it works before we dive into...
Are you reviewing their recommendations?
Yes, sir.
So it's, they're making recommendations you're taking into?
Yeah, and we still need to come back to the board. We're reviewing social media policies and get, get the board to approve a policy for us when we're ready to do that.
Do you have a preference for the ones you're going to start with?
Well, I think actually the, the top four or five vote getters are the ones that we were looking at.
That's the ones you're going to...
The YouTube, the Facebook, the Twitter, the RSS, Google Alerts.
Okay.
Those are, those are pretty standard across all the governments.
And then keep the regular email.
Exactly.
Okay.
Have an email list. But a good use of this potentially is like, whenever we send our tax bills, we get a ton of phone calls. And a good way is to, if we can get people to sign up on social media, we can put it out there that, you know, this is why you're getting a tax bill. This is why you're getting a value change notice, and hopefully preempt some of those calls. That's the hope of this program, just to be more proactive and enhance communication.
Do we even have any kind of policy, special maybe policy about our employees?
We have, we have some email and IT and have that tied into it right now. It's not as expansive as it probably needs to be, but we do have some things in place. And basically, the one thing I did was I cut most of the employees off from being able to access it at work just for personal use. So you have to get clearance from IT just to even be able to access it.
I'm afraid more of, you know, with my company, I have a, we have a policy that says if you do anything that hurts the image of the company based on a social site that you're on with any kind of material, that you're subject to being fired. That is what I'm doing.
I don't think we have anything that's like that. I think you, you start, you know, when you get into public employment where people are off the clock, you're, you have to be careful with passing policies in that, in that manner. But it would certainly be something good to talk, to go over with our attorneys as we're reviewing that policy.
I know the schools have gone through it. And I've seen a lot of information like on Charlotte, and they've actually fired teachers. They were, you know, explicit pictures on their Facebook page that they share with the world. You know, and then, you know, it makes, makes the county look bad, and that's, we represent...
Let me, let me ask you a question, Ed. Tell me how, for example, who will be our, our responder when these questions come up? When you have one person in your office that will do it, or anybody just jumps in? How will that work?
The way I hope to set it up, we, we currently have an email address called linked@leecountync.gov. That is the email address, and I'll just use Facebook as an example. That's the email address that we would use for Facebook. So whenever, whenever we send a post out to Facebook, if someone were to comment on that post, it would go back to that email address, which goes back to the entire committee. And then whoever can't answer that question would go to Facebook and answer the question. So it would go, my hopes is that it would go to the entire committee. And then that way, the appropriate person, the most knowledgeable person could go out and answer that question for the citizen.
This is a staff committee?
It is.
Each department, you know, that's interested has appointed one person.
Right. And is this tied into their job performance by any means?
We haven't, we haven't done it yet. We couldn't.
Oh, I'm not promoting it. I'm just saying that that could certainly come into play down the road. And I think we ought to look at it as we move through this process. Because if you, if I'm on a committee that has that kind of requirement, at some point in time, it may interfere with what I'm doing on a regular basis and the reason I'm hired. So let's just make sure that we consider that, that's all I'm saying. I don't know enough about what you're doing to engage. I'm just concerned about that aspect of it.
Right.
Dwayne can attest that my biggest concern is how we answer these questions and who's answering them and who has that authority. And, you know, but, you know, how we look at it is, let's just say tax, you know, we're getting, we'll be giving certain people in tax the ability to answer those questions. Well, they answer those questions on a daily basis already with a phone call. The thing they need to understand now is that they're creating a public document in that answer. So, you know, there's some training involved in making sure everybody understands some protocols. And if they don't know the answer, where to go to get the answer, let that person, let a department head answer it or if it needs to, come to me.
Say somebody does answer that tax, answers a tax question, will it legally be owned by at that point?
Still has to be consistent with the statute, you know, if that's what you're asking. You know, we, we can't make, if an employee interprets statute incorrectly, that does not give that person the ability to then take that information and, you know, still doesn't do it, it doesn't work that way in this state.
Have you gotten policies, Dwayne, counties that are using this? Have you gotten their policies?
Uh, no, we have not made that...
So at least we wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel. You could see what policies they even...
I forwarded one to you today, so you just probably have to add to it, yeah?
The state actually has, the state is real big on this. They've just gotten real big. And they just wrote a social media policy. So I might look into that, have access to it, and I might, or I will look into that and see. But the idea with this is it's not a takeover employees' time, because if you put too many, consider we've got probably, what, 17 or 18 departments on the committee? We don't want each department going out every day and making a post, because that just, it's like when a little boy cries wolf. You know, we want people to be interested in the program, but not have 17 or 18 posts a day coming to them. So we really want to limit and just put the most important and factual stuff out there from the individual department standpoint. Maybe a post every two, three, four days from the departments.
So you'll be monitoring it, the committee will, and Mr. Crumpton will have access to it, to see it occasionally, to make sure that, and you'll come back to us maybe later to give us an update on how things are going as it evolves?
Yes, sir.
Dwayne, do you know, is the city of Sanford looking at this program also? Is this...
I actually was, I don't know how I came across it, but I came across an online newspaper this past weekend. And it was saying that there needs to be a presence, an online presence. And it said Lee County is really progressing towards that, but the city of Sanford is not yet. So my take is, and I haven't heard anything, but my take is that city is not at this point. But one of the comments actually said it should be a collaboration between the city and the county, which could be a little difficult, but...
Well, we do have a couple of joint departments that, you know, we probably, I saw the person put down Planning and, and someone in Building Inspection, so it might be something that we can collaborate on those joint departments if they want to partake.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Listen, I have, I'm smarter than the fifth grader. I'm, I'm very serious on this committee approach. I hope that we leave the individual, responsible individuals into account as we move through this process. Sometimes it can become very time-consuming, and occasionally you get an overzealous person who wants to do most of the answering. And just be mindful of those things.
Right. Yeah, people don't even need to help themselves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is, has to do with the deer season, deer hunting season in Lee County. And you'll recall, fellow commissioners, that at the March 1 meeting, we adopted a resolution requesting an extension of the deer hunting season from the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission. And we have a response, and this ask, you're okay to authorize the chair to forward a letter to the North Carolina Wildlife Commission asking this item be placed on the agenda for their upcoming meeting in order for them to approve it? So, your pleasure. So moved that the motion's been made to approve. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. Passage unanimously, thank you very much. The next item, we're having a slight change here since we met with the school board. Mr. Crumpton is going to talk with us and entertain any further questions we might have regarding the financing package for the Lee County High School renovation project. Mr. Crumpton?
Just to get it started, Mr. Chairman, I was going to discuss the, the plan to some extent so that when we have the public hearing Thursday, there's some understanding of what we're discussing. The public hearing is on Thursday to discuss the additional $2,677,688 that we have authorized and that we could borrow on the plan. And in the package that I gave you at the earlier meeting, the debt detail was restructured once again to take advantage of the 15-year versus a 20-year payback and the use of the $350,000 for two years of public school lottery monies. As I said, the total principal's a little over 22 million. Total interest to be repaid, $3,375,869 for a total payback over the 15 years of $26,535,557. I didn't say that exactly right, but... The principal and interest increase is over the previous borrowing is $3,452,000. So, you know, there is a significant change in the payback. And the reason being is the, the monies that we're going to borrow are from the recovery zone economic development bonds, which are at interest, the net interest rate of 3.52%, not 0.57% of the QZAPs and the QSCAPs. So the interest increase, and I was just discussing this with the finance officer to make sure this was correct, but it, and it is, after I went back over, it is $754,794 over the life of the loan. So basically, that $350,000 gets us the additional interest paid for a year for those two years. But I'll be happy to answer any questions on, on, you know, the old plan or the new plan.
Any questions, Mr. Crumpton?
Something I asked Lisa about earlier is I have not seen any projections, like if July 1 of last year, we had this quarter percent sales tax, what our actual revenues would be from July 1 to now. We've estimated that this year it'd be 1.2 million that we, that we will bring in, but, you know...
We're estimating next year at $1,224,000.
Is that the quarter, is that...
That's the quarter sound. $1,224,000. And when we get into the financial report, you'll see that our, our point of sale did fairly well in January versus the, the distribution of the, the other sales tax revenues by, per capita. So indicates that we're, we're turning some things around, but there's some other parts of the state that are real, probably still struggling. So that, that distribution wasn't as good. But I feel a little bit better about the sales taxes after January.
Any other questions? I think we'll not be taking any action tonight. We'll have to have our hearing Thursday, and then we'll vote on the approval of the finance package.
I would like to ask if our finance director, if you don't mind, could you come to the board and let's kind of walk through the numbers as they are proposed? And I want to, while she's kind of make it clear, I'm not in opposition. I want to know what it is we're trying to do and how we plan to pay for it, because the tax increase is just not something that I have any intent in supporting. So we started out, I think, I heard in the meeting, finally wound up being 19880 or something like that?
Right, we had originally, we're planning for a 19D and I think it's $980,000. It's got $880,000.
That's it, right there.
1980.
You need the sheet?
No, actually, I have to see the, oh, I got it.
Angemalte?
I got it. I think I have one. What we had originally planned on doing... Do you have the email plan? For the tax...
Yeah, this one? No, I've, I've got the debt service.
We were using sales tax money, the new sales tax of $1,240,000, you're paying for that. Okay? Of course, this won't add to the $19,980. We were looking at using capital reserve money to fund the difference. And I want to say that number was in the range of maybe $3,000 to $5,000. Cover that annual debt service. We were still using tax dollars and the original restricted sales tax. So that we came out to a zero dollar amount needed from property, additional property tax. Okay? Now, we're looking at the one to the $22,000, $22,677. We're still looking at using the full $1,224,000. Okay?
All right.
The schedule you have in the package that has the new plan, there was also in this plan, we were looking at using the annual capital reserve contribution. Our financial policy calls for 1% of our budget to go to the annual capital reserve contribution. Basically, what that was going to do was going out to the capital reserve fund and then coming back in to help us fund that debt.
All right.
Okay? The one you have in front of you, if you noticed, that annual reserve contribution is zero. Our budget is tight enough that we have looked at the possibility of having to ask you to suspend that 1% contribution this year.
Right.
Or this coming year. If we do that, we need the $350,000 from the lottery funds along with the $1,224,000 from the sales tax. And we're having to up what we will take out of the already existing capital reserve balance up to $373,179.
Now, where'd you say that $373,179 is coming from?
It's coming from the capital reserve. There is already money sitting in the capital reserve that you've been funding over the last few years since we put that policy in place, and we've been using that. We're using approximately $1,171,000 out of the capital reserve fund this year to cover debt service.
Now, that's money we saved over the years by putting that policy in place.
So, this plan calls for you basically to use up all of that to fund this project at the 22,677,688. We will actually exhaust that fund in fiscal year 2012. Okay? And that's still using the $350,000 from lottery money for two years. Okay? And that assumes that we will be able to go back and partially fund our 1% contribution to the capital reserve in 2012. Should that answer your question?
It does, and I, I really appreciate it. Now, let me ask a different question. So, if, if we're doing that and exhausting those funds for the next two years, what does that do to other building projects or programs that might come on? And I'm not asking you specifically, but between the two of you, I am.
Well, that's what we were talking about, why we needed to stay at the 15 years. Because, you know, we have a CIP, but what you see here today is that without a tax rate increase, you know, we're, we're probably dead in the water for four to five years on any new projects that, that would come forward.
Right.
So, future building projects would require a property tax increase. Now, I think I was quoted as saying I was recommending a property tax rate increase to fund the CIP. I, I don't think that's what I said. I said, if the board wants to take any of these projects and move forward with them, you know, that's what probably would have to happen.
Another option would be, we've only got a year, two years for the 350. We take that for about five years, it will bring our capacity back up a little bit faster.
I've already made that note in my file. Last two years was not gonna cut it with me. That's not good enough. That's not enough insurance for us.
Because what, no, this is, you're exactly right. What's happening here by going from 19,980 to 22,677 is we are effectively reducing our eventual debt capacity. Especially keeping a 15-year payback. So, you know.
And you were gonna recommend canceling the 1% for?
For this coming?
This coming year. We would look at not funding that and only partially funding it in the 2012 fiscal year.
And what partially, you said partially?
It's a little more than half, what we, it would be a little bit more than we do 1%. What I'm looking at in fiscal year 2012 to be able to avoid a tax increase for this debt is maybe a little bit more than half percent of a contribution. So, again, when we say there's no property tax increase involved, it is strictly related to this debt, not our operational budget outside debt service.
What assumptions are you making in regard to sales tax growth?
I wanna say, we, we've changed it 70 times. It is a very small, maybe a 1% increase after the first year and the next year. And then I think we do 91% for a couple of years and then go back up to maybe 2.
When I first, when I first got here, we were using 4% growth in our debt models, which of course was bringing, you know, the debt capacity back, you know, a lot more quickly.
Right.
Well, we've, we've, we've also changed the growth of our tax base. Because right now, the last three years, our tax base has not grown. So, without a growing tax base, without, you know, a significantly quickly growing sales tax base, there only becomes one way to borrow additional money and that's through raising the property tax. But, you know, that's, you know, that's, that's the reality, I guess. I don't know how you get around it.
I'm gonna correct my statement, it's growing at 2%. And as I'm hearing, very small print, so I apologize, it's growing at 2%, which.
It's better than 1%, but not a whole lot better than, not even it.
And this model is all based on 7.94 cents of your property tax going to debt. When we started looking at this whole plan a couple of years ago, we were at nine, John's brought this up already, but we were upwards of 9 and 10 cents.
Nine and a half.
And we have progressively pushed it down to 7.94. And really with the best current money we've used this year, you've not committed, you've not done 7.94. And it's gonna be very tough for us to put the 7.94 towards debt service next year. So, at some point, to continue this, we've got to get it true up to the numbers we're using.
All right. Let, let me ask you before you, before I forget it, how about just put that in a box? Because that's, we kinda.
Just in a box?
Yeah, just put it in a box. And if you will then add three more boxes for me. And you don't have to do anything with them, but our operations budget, community college building needs, and the elementary school projects. I only ask this to be done so that my fellow board members will see, this is not just something that you take lightly. This is a serious matter that can, you know, you, you got the, once you commit, once you commit to the game, you're in it. You're in it.
And this isn't being funded totally with sales tax revenue? Because obviously we're taking other funds to supplement it.
But we, yeah, that was known when we did the sales tax. We put the model out there that we needed, we could fund it with the sales tax. We knew we would be using money from capital reserves. That was all part of the financial plan. And although we, you know, all the financial structure, everything was done, we knew we were taking into account that capital reserve money, that that's what that's there for. And that we were using that to help fund the plan.
And if I'm understanding it, well, one, that 350,000 that we were talking about two years, how about just make a little sidebar note there to say five years instead of two years? I'm likely to forget that.
And one thing too you remember is that when we first started talking about this, we had public, public school building capital fund money upwards of 500,600,000 in our plan that has gone, effectively has gone away.
I think if you take a look at, at this plan, that, that is really, you know, because we, we lump all the debt together, really, is how we look at it. And so, when you get a new piece of debt like this, we, we lump it all together and you sit there and you go, you know, there's a hole here. And that, and that hole was the 600,000 we were getting in ADM. And so, basically what we've done is we've taken the capital reserve and we're making that up. We're making the loss of the ADM up with the capital reserve.
Right.
Good financial policies allow you to cover that kind of stuff up. And that's what, what I'm, what I was trying to allude to earlier is that, you know, the last three years, we've made a lot of changes to the budget. We have stretched things, we have cut things, we have used everything at our disposal. And I'm telling you, we're running out of those things operationally if the state continues to push stuff down on us. And, you know, there's only two ways to, to cover those things going forward. And that's to cut, cut programs or to raise the property tax rate. There, you know, the, the other things that we've done the last three years, you know, we're running out of those. I don't wanna use tricks, but we're, you know, our methods, we're running out of those options. So, you know, I, I take a look at the debt on one side and then I take a look at the operations. And, and operationally, the impact from the state is, is pretty profound. Another thing you gotta remember is when I first got here, we brought on 1.1 million dollars in, in debt for, for Sandley Middle School and another million dollars in operations for Sandley Middle School without a property tax rate increase. That was 2.1 million dollars we brought on. We use, we, 1.6 million dollars of cuts to our budget to fund it and the 500,000 in the Medicaid relief deal. We got that 500,000 in one year. And all of a sudden, because of the way sales taxes went down and Medicaid expenses continued to go up, we weren't guaranteed that 500,000 after the first year anymore. So, we got that one year. So, that was another 500,000 that we picked up basically by cutting expenditures in our budget. And I'm telling you that it's gonna be hard to cut more expenditures in our budget. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you it can't be done. It can be done, but it's not gonna, I mean, it's gonna hurt.
Are we still looking at at least a $4 million deficit next fiscal year? You, I think that's what you had mentioned last, Commissioner.
Worst case.
Well, we were at about 4.2 million about two weeks ago and I was choking. Because I didn't expect to be that bad. I, I was actually expecting to be somewhere between 2.5 and 3 million. But we have, we have whittled it down and we're almost balanced. I was hoping to be balanced today, but I ended up getting into this stuff today and.
This is without knowing still what the General Assembly is gonna do to us to balance their budget?
That is correct. And that's why I thought it was important to get it, go ahead and get balanced because then we'd be able to see the true effect of what they did.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
About revenue. Based on the fact that there has been, from what I've read and heard, rather considerable improvement in GDP, industrial output, things like this, that are these leading indicators of the recovery of our economy. If, if it proves successful, I mean, if this really does start to advance faster than we might anticipate, what would a 1% increase in the sales tax, for instance, do for us, let alone a 2%? If we're talking about right now, Lisa, you know, a 2%, what if, what if we, what if we have over the next two years? What if it should go to 3%? Would that, what, what kind of number would that help?
Off the original restricted sales tax, at 2%, you're looking at about $43,000. So, 21.5 for a 1% increase. So, to go towards debt on the original restricted portion, you might, at 3%, you might be looking at about 60,000 more dollars.
A year?
Yes.
On the restricted portion.
On restricted.
On the additional quarter cent, you're looking at about 24,000 for 2%. So, you're talking maybe 36,000 to 40,000 more a year to the 100,000. If you can see that kind of turnaround.
Yeah.
The problem is, is that, you know, like going into the recession, we were, we didn't see the effect for about 12 months. The same thing happens when you come out. The, you know, the businesses will get, you know, will start picking up, they'll start getting better. Hopefully jobs will come back and then we'll come back. We, we always lag six to 12 months behind. So, even though we, we see some good things happening, like, you know, at Register of Deeds, she had the best March, I mean, the best month she's had in quite some time, you know, which is a good indication of, you know, real estate transactions are doing better, the building inspections department for the cities, you know, getting more revenue. So, we're seeing some things picking up, but one month doesn't make a recovery. So, you know, we're cautious and trying to be conservative about how we project and trying to project for the worst case. And that's where we're, and that's where we're, we're going.
I don't, I don't have my sheet with me, but the, the debt roll-off, how, some of our debt, how does that impact us over the next couple of years?
Yeah, what the financial.
That's already been taken in, okay.
With the financial, you know, we don't.
Okay.
Unless it's a straight lease purchase, like we go out and, you know, do level payments. These are bonds, we don't do level payments. We, we, the financial advisor plugs debt principal payments into the years that's best for us, knowing that I think we have to have 60% of it paid off in 10 years or something like that. Well, that was probably eight years with the 15-year debt. So, anyway, half the term, you gotta have 60% of, more than, almost 60% of it paid off. So, within that realm, you know, we're plugging principal along in the bond payments as we go along to make it better for us from an annualized basis, but.
So, you just pulled that out of the hole?
Yeah, so when you say, well, this debt rolled off, well, that doesn't necessarily mean that that's a good thing. Now, we do, we do have some things happening with the incentive payouts.
Yeah, I forgot about the next question.
Yeah, you know, next year, I think we recover, well, it depends on what stays on the books, but it's around the $350,000 area with Pfizer, Wyeth. And then it continually gets better as the administration building falls off, so.
There's also a lot of talk about lottery proceeds going up, lottery's doing better. So, you know, this year they're looking at, they were hoping for around 1,400 in revenues. So, that will continue to grow. The impact you're taking with 350 from them is not gonna be as bad. And then we only have this coming fiscal year and one more fiscal year on the pod leases.
Right.
So, you know, that frees up 200-some thousand dollars operationally in our budget that you could then move into maintenance or what they use lottery funds for.
Because they don't do pods anymore when we have projects.
You have three, you have three years left on the pods at CCCC, so that's 148.
Mr. Oldham had a question.
I was gonna ask, Lisa, realizing you're gonna pay more interest back, but what would a 20-year payout do for us?
Because of the interest costs, when I first had a report about it, it really did not seem to be advantageous to stretch it out. Because actually what we're doing, if you look, there's only, we can, we have to pay back the QSCAP and the QZAP in 15 years. That is the way those are structured by the law. So, the only thing we'd be doing is stretching out the recovery zone economic development bonds. And way this has all been structured is to pay them off first because that's where you're paying your highest interest rate. So, it's truly just gonna cost you a lot more money if you try to stretch that out to 20 years. So, they have tried to stretch it the most advantageous way and that's for us to pay those bonds off first. So, going to 20 years really didn't gain us anything. And we still felt like this, we could do it without a property tax increase with this plan. Therefore, we did not want to have to stretch that debt out and pay even more interest down the road.
If you stretch it out, it would reduce those numbers some there.
And you're not, you're not paying the principal off fast enough to create the debt capacity that we're gonna need to do the community college building?
Let me finish my box down there. I have one more, that one more box is gonna be the, the drop-off projects as a result of that lottery money.
I keep forgetting to grab that list.
I might add one.
What you've got.
You might add.
I will tell you, the big projects that they had next year where they were trying to do air conditioning at both middle schools, both east and west.
Roof repair, conditioning.
Therein lies the problem and the concern.
And the, there's heating and air, there are quite a few projects.
Remember, the older elementary schools are now hitting that point where the heat and air units have to start being replaced.
There's a lot of control units that need to be replaced, like the HPAC for analogy, but, you know.
So, those are considered capital projects and not current operating expense?
Under the.
Well, yeah, we learned that the hard way a couple of years ago when I, I couldn't understand how they were coming up with the maintenance expenses that we were paying per square foot. When I'm looking at 3.8 million dollars of current expense that's going into maintenance category, but yet they're only using what we're putting in the capital area. And that's when it was explained to me that they don't capital, they don't maintain, put into maintenance the size projects that we would at the county. Everything below 500,000 is not a capital item, capital expenditure. I think they're using, in certain categories, they may go as low as 10,000 or something like that.
Where, like in our general services budget, a roof, a re-roof project is in our operational budget. An HPAC unit is in our operational budget. With them, when you get their current expense budget that you're asked for, when you see maintenance, it is pretty much the janitorial service, things like that. When they have to replace locks, repaint carpet, HPAC units, it goes into what is considered their capital budget that you fund.
Current capital.
Current capital. So, it's a little skewed and over the years, that's where we've kinda held the line on them. And that's one reason, you know, they ended up pushing some projects out is because we held one, they've had to prioritize things, just like our general services is having to do right now because we're holding the line on building improvements and, you know, this higher dollar maintenance items. And they're having to pick and choose and stretch some things, so.
Well, they're very.
Projects that have to drop off unless the, the lottery monies do come in at a higher. Projects that have to drop off unless the lottery monies do come in at a higher level.
But, but these are, these are things that they are well aware of and they have to, as you say, they have to prioritize to, and they're presumably doing so with their petition to us to fund this new high school. So, I mean. Is there any further relevant discussion on this budget right now? Have we covered it pretty well?
No, I'm going to drop off. As soon as we can see, let us see what they're going to be. I like to see the master list of what they're going to use that lottery money for and then what they wanted to drop off. Here's a concern that I have and always have. They drop off projects to get back into capital that force us to make a decision on what's going to be built or repaired. This is a different ballgame, folks.
And remember, you do sign off on those projects that are done because the letter that goes through, when those lottery proceeds are approved, has to be signed off by you and by the Board of Education, so.
So if you don't have any knowledge of what they're doing or what they look like and how important they are, you know, I can still remember a discussion in here about how hot the gym was over the years, okay? Well, can you imagine what it's going to be when these elementary kids or, well, you get the point.
But they, and do you remember they have used, and this is one of the things I remember stories right enough a couple of years ago, we have used some of these lottery proceeds to help reduce the cost of this project over the last two or three years. They went ahead and demolished some buildings using lottery funds and went ahead and did some renovation while roof repairs and stuff at the high school, given the lottery proceeds already. So that has helped reduce the cost of this type of project.
Basically renovated the old gym with lottery funds.
And if we're going to be in a partnership, let's be in a real partnership, a true partnership, and not get stuck with the, the bad sides of what didn't get done.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you very much.
I'll just stay up here.
There is no new business tonight and the next item on our agenda is the manager's report and Mrs. Mender.
If you look in your agenda package, you have passing around the sales tax report that you have in your package, the March 2010 financial report. As you can see, sales taxes, we have actually at this point collected, right through the end of March, ever collected in our budget, so that is the bright light, is our property tax collections are coming in. And we're about two, almost 3% ahead of where we were at the same time last year. So just to make you aware of that, however.
Hold on just a second. So with the local option, sales taxes, it says through March, we've collected 50%?
Yes, ma'am.
And we've got three months to go.
That's seven months.
Yeah, remember, it runs three months behind.
We've collected.
It's actually six.
Oh, excuse me, that's six months.
That's only six months.
Sorry.
The numbers aren't even here yet.
But isn't that always the situation when we start in?
In June, we, on June 30th, we accrue what we estimate the last three months to be.
We've always done that?
Yes.
So when we get our first report then in August, it's always zero?
Yes, ma'am.
When I present to you the July, August, and September financial reports, it will be zero sales tax collections. And if you compare, if you look back to last year, we were only at 46.52% of our budget last year collected through the same timeframe. We are still running behind in other taxes and licenses, which is where our deed excise tax revenue is. But hopefully, hopefully we'll continue like March and come on in a little closer to budget. The other major concern is investment earnings. We are having a very hard time getting any decent rates on our money. We're staying well below 1% it seems like, so, but we are consistently trying to check rates and invest the money as best we can, so that is another area of concern.
Lisa, backing up to restricted intergovernmental, is 65% natural with just, what, three months left to go? Or is that part of the DSS problem?
We were only at 61% last year.
For the whole year?
Through this period of the year, so that's little, you're nine months through the year. You're two-thirds of the way through, so it's probably about right.
So if we don't meet budget there.
Another month, you've got to realize, it's truly only, or nine months of the year, eight months of revenue in because you're running one month behind because you're on a reimbursement method. I mean, there are revenues that we are running behind on, but in a lot of cases, there are expenditures offsetting those. There are three or four programs where we were cut 16% and those are entitlement programs and we're having to pick up those dollars.
With local tax dollars?
With local monies because of the way the program works. It is an entitlement program. The feds don't cap their dollars. State somehow or another can. So the feds are only going to pay 50% of the program. State caps their 25%. That pushes our 25% up to make up that difference, so. But those were not, I mean, it is there, but, you know, the larger programs where the revenues are falling short, we should see the expenditure shortfall on the social services side. It is a little different in health department. Health department, a lot of those services, we continue to render and their revenues are not coming in at the levels they had anticipated, whether it be fee revenue, Medicaid reimbursements, and our just state funding. They may not, you know, their funding cuts may have happened, but those services still have to be rendered. So we're getting, it's a double-edged sword sometimes. But, you know, based on our budget and where we were last year, we are in about the same situation this year.
Other questions?
On the expenditure side, we're saying 5% was our target. There's only two departments that are over that, one being the governing body, and that's still mostly coming to your dues and your brag and then economic development that we paid out quite a few incentives in the month of March and those are listed in your package, so. Any questions on the financial report?
We'll bring you back into compliance by the end.
One question, I saw the 911. Got a fire advisory board meeting Wednesday. Are you going to be there, John?
I had not planned on going.
Until now.
The only reason I ask is about, you know, potential of using those 911 funds for the radios with the new broadband regulations or bandwidth regulations.
I've talked to Shane about it and, you know, we still have, how much money is left in the wireline transfer? 400 or 395, something like that?
I don't want to quote that number because it will come out. But there's some money.
It's in that range, so.
395,000?
What we were holding on to the money for is if Shane gets the grant for the new EOC, we have to have a match. And that would take up, well, wouldn't take up all of it, but, you know, if you did the radios and the grant, that would probably exhaust that fund.
I see Commissioner Hayes emailed the legislative committee that's working to do that. When do we think they might make a decision to free up some of those funds that they're holding there? And what issues that were 911?
Well, we're headed into the short session, so hopefully that will, that will happen in the short session. One of the things that they're, they proposed doing is changing the formula based how they distribute the funds instead of, I guess it's done by per capita. They've talked about doing it based on your history for expenditures. The larger counties have made a play, which they normally do at some point, to get more money out of the fund. And it's going to be based on your expenditures. So we're getting ready to have discussions with the city about, you know, upgrading equipment, upgrading systems and start spending the money that we have. I mean, we have over a million dollars now in the restricted fund and.
At the state level?
We have that in our, in our possession, but trying to find things that, that we can spend that on is difficult at best.
You can't move it around or anything like that.
So crazy.
Legally spend it on as Mr. Reeve just mentioned in my ear. But, you know, hopefully if the law changes, you know, there are a lot of things that we could do. Also free up some stuff that we could do in the, in the secondary PSAP at the sheriff's office, which right now we're pretty restricted. The only time we can buy anything over there is when there's a compatibility issue between the primary PSAP and the secondary PSAP on those covered expenditures.
You know, while you're next, that subject matter, and I want to openly apologize to Commissioner Durango for referring her as a rookie early on. I do apologize. I meant no harm.
That's okay.
But let me say that that's an example, the 911 fund that we're talking about here now is an example. You can go to work on, but the more attention you draw to some funds that we already receive, the more state comes after.
You're right.
So it's a catch 22 and you have to be very careful about what you remind them that you have.
Exactly right, especially these days.
Sales tax, if you have the January distribution in front of you, the numbers, while it's below the December number, are much better than what we typically see happen in January. We can sometimes see up to $100,000 fall off from December to January. So to only see a $10,000 fall off was somewhat of a relief after how bad December was. So, and as John pointed out to you, Article 39 was actually up from December. And if you look at the second sheet, you can see there that we were quite a bit, you know, about 26,000 more than what we were last year in January. So, and it is higher than our Articles 40 and 42, which is half per capita, half point-of-sale now distribution. So it does look like in the month of January, Lee County may have fared better than some of the areas across the state. So we are cautiously monitoring that. If you look back at that first page again, you will see that it now have what we are projecting for this year on the schedule also in addition to what we originally budgeted. And those numbers are lower than what we had originally budgeted. And based on where we are right now through January, it looks like we may be on target with those projections. Obviously, as we've told you, in December, we do not think we will make budget unless there is a very strong trend in the tide. But we do, right now, I do still feel relatively decent about the projections that we've modified that to. Any questions?
Questions?
We have, we have gone ahead and notified the departments that, you know, we want them for the remainder of the year to really only make purchases that they need to continue their basic operations and provide those minimum services. And the reason being is, as we look at the fund balance that we appropriated for the year with the San Lee Dam and, and some other things, we're just trying to recoup some of that. We have fund balance that we can actually use for next year to help us balance our budget, so. Actually, what, you know, we saw tonight and going back over projections this morning, I feel halfway, you know, optimistic that we're doing, we're doing fairly well. And we don't need to do anything drastic at this point.
Yeah, the.
Drastic with taking care of itself.
Your ability to be able to close that tremendous gap there is something that's very pleasing. I mean, it's on the backs of our departments and our people, not that that's a piece of cake, but, but that there's a sane way to do it and so far, so good.
I don't think there are going to be too many people happy when they get their final budgets, but, you know, the number one priority we had was that there wouldn't be a mass rift in the county like we did last year, that we didn't have to eliminate 26 positions, so. We, the health department has eliminated one position in environmental health. They did it just because the revenue numbers just are so bad, it just didn't make a business sense to, to keep going. But that is the only position in the budget that is, is being eliminated. So I think we've met that priority, but in some other areas, it's, it's not very, you know, it's not very good and some people are going to have to really suck it up next year.
Okay, thank you very much.
Lisa, are you going to cover page 43?
I roughly did when I mentioned that economic development was one of the areas over. But those are the incentives that were paid out in the month of March. What you see in the parentheses there is what was budgeted for those incentives versus what we paid out.
Tell me what the process is. This is always initiated when you get this communication from Bob Hughes?
Yes.
Okay, and then what do we do to verify last year's property tax statement for them with this? Do we do that?
That is done by Mr. Hughes, and when I got the original letter, there was some differences in the amounts versus the budget, what we had budgeted at, so I contacted him and he did go back and review his numbers again and make some adjustments so that, you know, he stayed within the budget. So he is the responsible party for reviewing that information.
There's nobody here within the county who analyzes property tax statement for any one of these companies from the previous year with this one to see how much of a, you know, their tax base increased or taxable amount increased, I guess, and then, we're just taking his word for it?
We have in the past.
Oh, I'm not comfortable with that.
Mr. Crumpson and I have discussed that and are looking as everything's being discussed with EDC. That is one of the things we have looked at and have discussed and we're hoping to handle in the process of whatever you decided to do with regards to EDC.
It's one of the reasons in the proposal that we put that we would write the check to the company instead of writing it to the EDC, because if we're writing the check to the company, we're going to have to verify it through the tax office. It adds another step, but one of the, one of the issues here isn't that, you know, I'm concerned that we're overpaying. I'm concerned that we're extending, you know, that, you know, they didn't hit their number or something and, you know, or they didn't do the project and we extended because of that. Well, it kind of messes up how we're projecting for the future, when we're going to get our benefit back.
Plus the contract is a contract.
That's correct, so there are some issues there. And plus, if we, if we've issued the grant and we have the contract, we should get the benefit from the company of, you know, we're writing the check.
Well, very least, you know, if the rationale for doing this is not so much jobs, but it's increasing the taxable base, very least we should be doing is making sure that that taxable base did increase.
I agree.
So all these incentives we've paid over the years, nobody from the county has ever compared tax statement from previous year to the year where we paid out the incentives?
We've come back, we have gone back.
One's come forward.
We have gone back and compared what they said they were going to generate with Dwayne. And Dwayne did a fabulous spreadsheet, compared what was actually on the books. And, you know, it, it's close, not exact, but, you know, we, we have checked it. But when they come in, I see, you know, the request, I question, and the check goes out. But, you know, it's, it's one of those things. I, I agree with you and that's one of the reasons I put it in that, put it in the position paper was I felt like we need to take better ownership of, of that, of those payments.
Well, I know that several times I've, you know, emailed or called and said, can you give me a list of the latest incentives? I'm really nervous because you have to get the information from EDC. I don't like not being in control of the data. I don't like having to depend on them to tell us what we've committed to, so.
Well, and I'll use, you know, the frontier spinning as an example is, you know, we've had one agreement out there for a while and, you know, they didn't do the investment before January 1st. So if we didn't know that, we would expect, you know, in next year's budget, well, we were going to have to write that check. Well, since it's been pushed back, it will fall into the following year. But as you're trying to project out the schedule, you know, it impacts your future years. And as we're trying to do projections like that was up there, it makes it very difficult when you say, well, they, you know, got delayed and we're not, you know, we're actually, and actually it was what happened next, next year, in the next year's budget, I thought we were going to have a benefit, a bigger benefit in the next year's budget, but because a project got pushed back into another fiscal year, it's one year removed from getting that. So we need to, we need to understand that better and how that works. And it's not, it's not to say that EDC has done anything wrong. I just think we need to understand it better and, and, and take control and, and ownership of it.
We're responsible for this money. We can't just keep writing checks and not knowing what's going on and that's why I'm hopeful that we're going to bring a recommendation on our first meeting in May to the board regarding EDC.
Dwayne, I have a question. When a company comes to us and then how do you pick up that they actually did this? Is it when they do that property report that's due the end of January? Is that normally when you pick up the extra investment or how is it?
We can. We usually do a report of the top tax.
We can, we usually do a report of the top taxpayers, compares it by fiscal year to fiscal year so we can see any increase or decrease. You're talking about the tax base?
Yeah, so for example, the last one we did was frontier spinning. So if they've made that investment now, when they file their business property report, whatever that report is, it's due January thirty-first, shouldn't that show up there?
It should.
And it gets plugged in so that there, it actually will appear on their tax statement that goes out?
Exactly, it should be on the listing form and we can, we can run queries for that if that's something the Board wants to see.
And we can do that and also when, let's say if it, that's on equipment, when they do their business personal property listing. But if they're doing, uh, real estate, um, if they're doing any construction, when they get their permits, the appraisers pick up those permits and they're looking for the completion of the building and then they get assessed that way, um, on the buildings. But the equipment, um, you know, there is an honor system in place on that. And the only way, the only way you wouldn't know is if they got audited and that equipment was not there.
I think you ought to just have them go out there and verify. I mean, anytime we give an incentive, have them have the tax form for it, it's not that difficult.
Well, if you want to set the policy of the Board, I think that'd be a great thing to do, actually.
But how would they know what was there before and what was added and what's fully depreciated out and?
They're supposed to list it.
They're supposed to list it every year, so we, if, if they're keeping good records, they're gonna wanna make sure that it's, it's accurate. So if they do get audited, we don't get it picked up.
It's the same thing you see when they come in asking for something to be waived or failing to list, same situation.
I mean, I don't see why it can't be, if they're gonna, if they're gonna come to us for an incentive, why can't we have the incentive verified at, at the end of their, you know, the project? I mean, I'll make a motion right now to do that.
Well, we'd like for you to wait and allow the rebound and make some.
We'll make it there.
Well, you know, but in fairness, if, if the ED is not asking for it and not checking it, so you can't blame everybody.
I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying.
I mean, I'm not talking about you, I'm just saying you can't blame the tax office for not automatically doing it and you can't blame them for whatever it is they're doing. They're just doing what they, they asked to do.
Well, it's like a cut the year of end for the end of the year.
Right, how many times we go check and see how much inventory, did they give it right? Did they give us enough? We don't do that.
There's six companies here, there's, it should be just in our policy that if we're, we're giving incentives, they just know that they're gonna come back and audit them every year.
We're, we're gonna be, we're gonna get our hands around that. Thank you. Okay, um, Commissioner's comments. Mr. Reeve?
I'll give it a dog, move on.
I'd like to make a motion, we only have one meeting in July, August, September of this year, stagger the times from six, three, and six.
All right, that's, the motion's been made and, uh, we're gonna, months of July, August, and September will be one month, uh, one meeting and we'll stagger the times as we have in the past, three, six, three.
Or six, three.
It'll always be the.
Or six, three, six.
Six, three, six.
The third Monday.
Okay, six, three, six. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, opposed? Very good, thank you very much. Anything else, Mr. Kelly?
I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Owen?
I think all of you.
Okay, Mrs. Darrow?
I'd just like to congratulate Commissioner Kelly on the new addition to his family.
Well, I appreciate it, it's been a nice little roll of pester.
And also thank you to everybody that came out to the Broadway Our Way Festival on Saturday. It's a great, great day. If you missed it this year, put it on your calendar for next year.
Came in time for a new tax deduction, right?
No.
I also wanna thank the organizers of the Broadway Our Way event. I took my two granddaughters there Saturday morning and saw lots of people. I was just really, really impressed with how much work and whatever had gone into that, so it was a lot of fun, I enjoyed it. And I'm not a festival person, but I had a lot of fun.
Mr. Patterson?
I don't have anything, but I'd like to have a report to Dale on his grandson, is he doing good?
Uh, yes, I can speak with that. Uh, he's doing wonderfully well, uh, healthy, except, uh, he's a little rowdy with his brothers. He wants to play Red Rover, Red Rover, send Gavin on over and he really jumps on them hard. But thank you for asking, he's doing wonderful.
Um, just to remind us that we will be back here Thursday at five PM for a hearing, public hearing regarding the financial package for the Lee County High School. And I think that's been properly advertised, but it'll be here before you know it. And having said that, we have a proper motion that should put this in perspective.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that the meeting be adjourned to reconvene at five o'clock PM in the Commissioner's room in the county office building on Thursday, April twenty-second, two thousand and ten.
That should be recessed, not adjourned.
We were.
Okay, this is Mr. Holt, our adjourning to reconvene.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just following the letter of the law.
Attorney says we're good, we're good.
We got a lot of, a lot of answers out here tonight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.